I'd like to call to order the March 27, 2013, meeting of the Milton School Committee. Is this on?
Wait.
Could you just get their attention?
Hello?
The amp isn't on yet.
Glenn's not used to his class not giving attention.
I know.
No, I'll just...
This is the rowdiest group we've ever had.
We'll try again. I'd like to call to order the March 27, 2013, meeting of the Milton School Committee. And as is our custom, I invite you to stand with us and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda this evening, I just have one minor alteration under the superintendent's report. We're going to move the future problem solvers ahead of the early literacy presentation. So we're just going to switch those two. Anyone else have any corrections or amendments to the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll declare the agenda approved. We will next move into citizens speak. Do we have anyone here tonight before citizens speak? All right, it appears not. So we will move into approval of the minutes of February 6.
So move.
Move, my business, Sheridan, second by Mr. Walker. Any comments, corrections? Changes to the minutes of February 6. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. And so now we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Gormley.
Thank you, Chairman Pavlicek. Well, it gives me great delight and pride and pleasure tonight to invite all our future problem solvers and their coaches to join the school committee at the table. If all of our problem solvers will come forward and our coaches, this is a very, very exciting night for the Milton Public Schools. We thought perhaps one group might stand behind so that we would be able to see everyone. And Laurie Henry has agreed to make all of the introductions and give the presentations so the viewing public and the school committee might better understand what future problem solving is and the accomplishments of these Milton Public Schools students every day in school, but especially last Saturday. Laurie Henry?
Thank you so much. On Saturday, March 23, the Massachusetts Future Problem Solving State Bowl took place at Mass Maritime Academy in Buzzards Bay. And the topic was appropriate considering the setting. It was ocean soup was our topic. And representing Milton, and I'm going to just, I'll name all of our team members, even though they're not all here today. But in the middle division from Pierce were Sachin Meyer, Jordan Bachi, Hyunin Nguyen, Shane Berry, and Timothy Karaf. And then representing Milton in the junior division from Colicott were Jackson Humphries, Shay Flanagan, Kate Delaney, Nora Kleiman, and Molly Murtaugh. And representing Milton in the junior division from Glover were Ella Zimmerman, Hudson Smith, Kate Posse, Kelly McKenzie, and Matt Kramer. And representing Milton in the junior individual competition from Tucker was Grace Quijano. So our dedicated coaches are Marty McKenna, Anna Higgins, Christina Reynolds, Nicole Hoisianis, Jen Gilbert, and Bill Vano. And Jackson Humphries from Colicott would like to describe for you briefly what the state bowl was like for him.
On Saturday, my team and I were proud to represent my school in town at the Future Problem Solving State Bowl at Massachusetts Maritime Academy. We had been preparing our skills and researching on the topic, ocean soup, also known as ocean pollution. We knew that this was the time to practice our skills for real. As soon as we got to the academy, Shay Flanagan, Kate Delaney, and I said goodbye to our other Colicott friends Nora Kleiman and Molly Murtaugh, who would be representing Colicott as individuals. We were led into the bright, clean gymnasium where we would be constantly working on the six-step FPS packet for the next two hours. The first step is to identify challenges. Next, to select an underlying challenge and to brainstorm solutions. After that, we developed criteria and then fill out our criteria chart. Finally, we wrote our three-paragraph action plan. We worked and worked until we had double-checked our work. We hit a wonderful launch and got back to work. This time, we would be preparing our packet. We brought with us a whole bunch of absurd items like plastic cups or a lampshade. With all 20 items, we made props and costumes to help us in our presentation. This presentation was supposed to mimic your action plan. For instance, if you were to plant, if your plan was to put a chemical in the water to dissolve plastic, you would need to do that onstage. In the end, we got third place for the packet and first place for the action plan presentation.
Thank you, Jackson. And we had quite a few winners, as Jackson explained. Well, from Pierce, Timothy Karaf won second place in the future problem-solving scenario writing.
So would you raise it?
Thank you, Timothy. And the team from Colicott won first place in the action plan presentation and third place in the team competition. And our team from Glover won third place in the action plan presentation and second place in the team competition. And in fact, we may even have more winners once the individual competition is scored, which will be in a week or two. So we're just so proud of all of our competitors as well as our awesome coaches. Thank you so much.
Would you explain to the school committee and the viewing public what happens with the individual competition?
Yes. So the individual competition, when a team itself doesn't advance to the state bowl, there are, there are only nine teams invited to the state bowl. Two of them were from Milton. But the teams can choose to send an individual. So any of the individuals that didn't advance, we offered that option to them. And Timothy from Pierce decided to do it. Grace Quijano from Tucker. And Nora Kleiman and Molly Murtaugh from Colicott. So now, they went in a room and did the, all six steps on their own. Their packets won't be scored for a week or two, as I said, so we'll get those results back. And our Timothy was invited, two years ago Timothy, to go to the International Bowl as an individual. So we're very hopeful.
Oh, I think up from the band, we have a few of us want to inter, come right over.
Shay and Kate have joined us from the concert. They took a break from performing to come up to, thank you very much.
So Ms. Henry, before the school committee might have some questions, would you do me a favor and just hold the mic and go down and have each of these students introduce themselves? Definitely.
Hi, I'm Jackson Humphries from Colicott School.
I'm Ella Zimmerman from Glover School.
I'm Kate Posse from Glover School.
I'm Kelly McKenzie from Glover School.
I'm Matthew Kramer from Glover School.
I'm Hudson Smith from Glover School.
I'm Nora Kleiman from Colicott School.
Dr. Spalding, principal of the Pierce Middle School. And if I may, just for a moment, I know I speak on behalf of all of the principals who are so unbelievably proud of all of you. As some of you may know, the day-to-day gets very busy and there is nothing more joyous than hearing a good news story about the wonderful things that students have done. I'm especially proud, of course, of our Pierce Middle School students, but equally as proud of all of you as are all of your principals and the teachers who work so hard on your behalf. So thank you for doing us proud. We love that.
I'm Timothy Karaf from the, from Pierce Middle School.
I'm Jordan Bachi from Pierce.
I'm Hyunin Nguyen from Pierce Middle School.
I'm Shay Flanagan from Colicott.
Anna Higgins from Colicott.
Kate Delaney from Colicott.
Grace Quijano from Tucker School.
Marty McKenna, coach from Tucker.
And Christina Reynolds, coach from Tucker. Glover, my goodness. Stage fright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Derrick, go ahead.
Many of you might not know this, but Superintendent Gormley knows that I'm a huge future problem solver fan. Ever since I met with Superintendent Gormley and asked her, I said, "There's this new thing that we're really trying to push, and that's citizenship in schools, teaching citizenship, not just history, but how you can change things in the world and how, you know, what can we do about that?" And she said, "Oh, we have this great program called Future Problem Solvers." And I think the next tour I went on, we made sure we went to a Future Problem Solvers class. And I'm just, then when I heard about the competitions and how well you all did, I was so proud. I mean, what a great thing. You're not just, you're taking the knowledge from the classroom and learning how to be great citizenship, citizens in the world. And I think that's fantastic. So congratulations to all of you. I hope you kind of keep it up because I couldn't be a bigger fan of all of you and of your program.
Congratulations as well. As I listen to each of the steps that you have to go through, it is pretty impressive, let me tell you. And we're proud of you. We're proud of all of you. And Jackson, in addition to future problem solvers, I think future public speaking.
Anyone else?
Great job. If I might, before you leave, so I have a little secret to tell you, that nobody's supposed to have a favorite. Everybody's supposed to be equal. But the principals will tell you that my favorite program is future problem solving. And to Mr. Walker's point, I don't think until you do it or you coach it and applause to these coaches, you understand that these students are really in a situation that's a lifetime skill. They work in a group. They have to research a problem. They have to come up with a solution. As Mr. Humphries said, how easy is that solution to implement? What do you need to implement that solution? Did the solution work? And you're not giving yourselves credit. After that marathon of being in that room, they then are given these peculiar items and they have to sell their solution to everyone in the audience. And as I said to everyone in the schools, I could only, I almost heard the thunder of applause when they were calling out the Milton Public Schools' names. And I could not have been more proud. I couldn't be there, but I was getting texts from all of the coaches that were there telling us about your accomplishment. We are very proud of you. And to the coaches, no easy feat. No easy feat. To how many teams, do you remember the data? How many teams across the town, the state compete? I think, you know, I wouldn't, I can't tell you exactly how many. We'll get that number to the school committee. And then all of, and then three times, three times during the year, you send in results. And so based on those cumulative results, that's who is invited. You have beat out other teams across the state to be invited to the state bowl. And so, again, I want to applaud you and tell you how proud we are of you, each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Back to the band, back to the concert. And thank you to your, to these students' parents for bringing them tonight. Thank you. Next, next I'd like to invite to join the school committee at the table, Carolyn Lyons and Ada Rose Maron. Would you join us? Hot act to follow. Won't you join right over there? So as way of introduction, the school committee and the finance subcommittee asked for an advancement budget. And for those new in the viewing public, we met as a leadership team and we brainstormed. The charge was initiatives that would move the Milton Public Schools ahead. And we met right in this room with the principals and all the curriculum directors. And we did a outside-the-box with the charts all over the walls and bringing 15 to 17 initiatives down to a number that we then brought in front of the school committee. And the charge of the school committee was to research those initiatives, back them with current research. What would be the benchmarks? How, what kind of funds would we, would we need to fund these initiatives? What would be the benchmarks during the coming next school year if we were able to, in fact, secure those funds and implement the initiatives? What would be the student achievement outcomes we would be looking for? And so the consensus of the leadership team we put in front of the school committee, early literacy, closing the proficiency achievement gap, and improving science achievement and RM-CAS scores in the Milton Public Schools. And again, the entire system identified with those initiatives. Again, the initiatives cross K-12. And simultaneously, to us doing this work within the schools, Ada Rose Maron, who is a Milton Public School parent, her children have graduated. Ada, for the viewing public, works with our full-day kindergarten staff, has been really the individual who should take all of the credit for moving full-day kindergarten into the Milton Public Schools, doing the background work with the school committee and a superintendent who knew nothing about full-day kindergarten 100 years ago, winning over public support. So that now we have a full-day kindergarten program that 320 children attend and four families choose, for reasons other than academics, to not enroll their child in full-day kindergarten. So Ada brought forward Carolyn Lyons. And as I said to Carolyn, her, in her biography, the thing she's most proud is, and I'm most proud, she's a Colicott parent. And so we had a resource within this town equal to Ada in the area of early literacy. And I want to tell the school committee that Carolyn Lyons' brief biography provided me with the research that I, then I provided the school committee to identify in all the leadership team. Briefly, if you don't mind, Carolyn. Carolyn is the Chief Executive Officer of Strategies for Children. She is responsible for the overall strategic leadership and management of Strategies for Children, an independent, nonprofit organization that works to ensure that children in Massachusetts have access to high-quality early education and become proficient readers by the end of grade three. Exactly our charge. Carolyn joined Strategies for Children as their Chief Operating Officer in 2002 after her career with Pierce and Education Learning Network and the Director of International Program and Continental Cable Vision Media One. She earned her MBA at Darden Graduate School of Business at University of Virginia and her undergraduate degree at St. Joseph's. Carolyn is a member of the SFC leadership team and has spearheaded the creation of the nation's first Department of Early Education and Care. We are so proud. We've streamlined governance of consolidating Massachusetts' early education and childcare agencies into one department. She has been successful in establishing the Universal Pre-Kindergarten Grant Program and that creates the nation's first state-funded scholarship for early educators. And the information that I gave the leadership team in 2010, the Organization Commission turned the page, Refocusing Massachusetts for Reading Success. And that was the basis of our initiative, sharing with the leadership team. So we could not be more proud. We wanted to schedule you to come, again, educating the school committee and the viewing public. And since our initiative and meeting you, the press around early literacy and reading by the end of grade three has been phenomenal. So your work is working. And I'm very proud to present both of you to the Milton School Committee and the public. Welcome.
Thank you. I am delighted to be here. I present to school committees all over the state. So it's more than timely, especially with all the recent momentum around early learning and literacy, to be here within my own community. Now, I'm thrilled to be here. And it's also very timely. You guys all have a packet of information that we had shared with Mary earlier today. So I can just jump into it. And if you have questions, please let me know. So as Mary said, I am president of Strategies for Children. We are a privately funded, nonprofit organization. We're spearheading a statewide campaign to make sure children can read proficiently by the end of third grade. And what I'll do today is I'll review some of the research around it and then some of the recent momentum and then give some suggestions about what we can do here in Milton. And I know it's kind of the basis of what you guys have already discussed, but hopefully to put more context and validation into what you're discussing. And I also think this will cover two of the, three things that you just mentioned, that early literacy and closing some proficiency achievement gaps. So as Mary had mentioned, I mean, you'll see some of our, our work has led to many of the things listed up here in partnership with many other organizations and individuals across the state, including Ada, with whom we've been working very closely, especially on the full-day KP piece, but also representing the public schools in our work since... Men, several years. So as Mary said, we were, we helped to, we worked with the legislature to create the Consolidated Department of Early Education and Care. We were the first state in the nation to have a government agency focused on the education of children zero to five, then K-12, which is DESI, as you know, and higher ed, all reporting up to the Secretaryate of Education. That is a unique model. It has since been replicated in other places, but we were the first state, the Commonwealth was, to really go with that model for education governance. Our work has created, back in 2006, we looked at research that indicated the importance of a BA to, you know, a preschool teacher. And we looked at the percentage of early educators in Massachusetts that had a BA. And we found that less than a third of children had access to a, in center-based programs, had access to a teacher with a BA. We worked with the legislature to create a scholarship program for early educators to pursue their AA and BA degrees, which has since awarded 5,000 scholarships cumulative. We helped create the Universal Pre-Kindergarten Grant Program at the, at the Department of Early Education and Care, which has been stymied by the lack of funding. We helped create a, inform the creation of a quality rating and improvement system to really understand where early education and care programs are on a, on a quality scale and how to target resources accordingly to help move them up the scale. We worked, a lot of the foundational elements we put in place helped result in the award of a $50 million Early Learning Challenge Grant to the state. That was part two of Race to the Top, focused on early learning, back in late 2011, early 2012. We recently worked with the legislature last session to really establish third-grade reading proficiency at a high level in state government. You know, understanding that it's, and I'll go through this tonight, it's not just the responsibility of the public schools. Learning begins at birth. And we needed a place in government that wasn't necessarily in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed to own this vision for children. It had to be for children birth to nine. We worked to get legislation passed last session that basically creates a high-level council that's chaired by the Secretary of Education that focuses on third-grade reading proficiency. We're very pleased. There were about 300 bills that were referred to the Education Committee last session, and five were passed, and one was ours. So we were delighted with that. We were frustrated how long it took, but excited that it finally yielded fruit. And then we've been working with Ada and others to really think about full-day kindergarten and how critical that is. And over the past 10 years, we've seen an increase in the percentage of children attending full-day K from 38% to over 80% today. The issue remains, the tuition and how uneven that is across the state. So as you guys well know, I mean, we really lead the nation as a Commonwealth on many key educational measurements. We're number one in NAEP in the fourth and eighth grade. Our high school graduation rate has continued to increase. 83% of last year, of 2011 cohort graduated. So, you know, in all our talks with the education policymakers, the legislature, superintendents, school committees, so what's the problem? It's what you guys have already nailed or identified as a problem. It's third-grade reading proficiency. This is, we were meeting with one of the senior people at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education today. And he was voicing his frustration that we talk a lot about all the great things we're doing, but don't really talk about our achievement gaps to the extent we should. This is a significant issue. 39% of our children are not able to read proficiently at the end of third grade. And among low-income children, it's significantly higher. And this is the chart that shocks people. These rates have remained stagnant over the past 10 years. The orange, the orange, well, you can see it. The orange line is the average of all students. And then the blue line is non-low-income students. And the purple line is low-income students. And despite all the efforts that have been made in education reform, all the money, very good efforts by many, we have not been able to budge on this issue. This is something that really strikes policymakers when we're up at the State House. This isn't just an issue, it obviously just affects disproportionately low-income children, children from low-income families. But this is an issue across the state. We'll go into a suburban legislator's office and show them their scores. And they'll be like, "These can't be, this can't be my district." And it is. It's a, it's an issue that, in fact, impacts all of our children across the state. And what was not on that earlier chart is only 11% of our children last year statewide were proficient. So when we think about how we're positioning and framing our economy and the increasingly global competitive workforce, this workplace, it's a big issue as we're looking at our competition, China, South Korea. So one of the things we do as a resource for policymakers and communities is we package information that's readily accessible through public data sources and put it into fact sheets. So this is an example of some data from Milton compared to the state. And you have a fully fleshed-out pack, version of this in your packet that basically just, that provides some key data on children's early education and care and the outcomes, the third-grade reading proficiency. Third-grade reading is the first universally administered benchmark of children's academic success in the Commonwealth. The Department of Early Education and Care is statutorily responsible for creating a kindergarten readiness assessment. It's in progress, but right now, third grade is the key, the first metric we can look at. So this is some of the data around Milton. We've, you know, we're about 10% above the statewide average in terms of our reading proficiency. But here's that tracking from 2001. And this is not in your packets. We just created this today. This demonstrates that we, even here, we're having, you know, it's been pretty stagnant over the years. This, this, you know, all these charts depicting the lack, the real lack of progress. We see blips year to year in most of our communities and across the state. But no one has really been able to really identify and scale up and sustain a model that will really impact these, these scores. And why is it important? It's a critical predictor. It's a smart predictor. We should be paying more attention to it, of children's future academic progress. We know 74% of children who struggle with reading at this early, you know, at this point, at third grade, will continue to significantly struggle in school. It impacts high school dropout rates. It impacts special, special ed referrals. There's all types of research that quantify the impact of children who are not able to read proficiently. You'll see, this is a stat that's quoted quite often. They're four times less likely to graduate high school in five years than proficient readers. If we get early learning and literacy right, everything else on the, on the educational agenda, achievement gap, STEM dropout rate, it becomes easier to tackle. It's not the panacea, but it, it's the foundation upon which everything else is built. Some statewide context, only 83% of our ninth graders graduate from high school within that four years. And each high school dropout costs, on average, about $350,000 to taxpayers, primarily in terms of lower tax revenues and the higher Medicare and Medicaid costs. We also know, there's been a lot of research over the last decade about brain development and vocabulary acquisition. We know that the achievement gap is established and well-documented well before kindergarten, not to mention third grade. It's, this is a very famous study. I'm not sure if you guys have seen this before. But it basically demonstrates that children from professional, to professional parents have an income that's significantly higher than children from welfare families as early as three years old. There's, there was a very compelling chart that is outdated now, but it was created by the Rand Foundation, the Rand Corporation in California, which basically looked at public, public funding for children. And it overlaid against this. And it was basically, you know, we're not even spending on children until this gap is well, I mean, it would be well to the right of... And it was basically, you know, we're not even spending on children until this gap is well, I mean, it would be well to the right of the x-axis here. So despite that, our, our funding here in Massachusetts for early education and care is down 28% since FY01, and about $80 million from, since FY09. And the bulk of our funding here in Massachusetts is federal. Our state puts in a very small percentage of funding into early education and care, which is one of the key things that my advocacy organization is focused on, increasing the state investment. Thanks. So we talked a little bit about the recent momentum. Obviously, one of the key moving pieces now is the governor's proposed investments. He's proposing $130 million in early education and care in the FY14 state budget. What is most exciting about that is if you look at his line items, and I think, I included some abbreviated line items for you guys. Many of his proposed investments are framed around the outcome of third grade reading proficiency. He very much understands the critical, the critical relationship between the early years and third grade reading proficiency. You can turn it. So, oop, sorry. Thank you. So he, and he's, it's a very comprehensive proposal. We're not naive enough to think that the legislature is going to bless it and send it on its way. But it's very comprehensive in that it reflects both the need to get children into high-quality early education and care programs, which is an access piece. There are about 30,000 children, zero to five, across the state on a waiting list for a subsidized slot in an early education and care program. So he has money for that. He also has money for quality, because all the research, all the great outcomes that we know are possible through early ed are only possible if it's a high-quality experience. So he's, it's a very comprehensive, well-thought-out budget proposal. And if you want more information, I can tell you more about that. And also, of course, the president. I mean, this, we're really at a tipping point for this issue, because I think, as we have several superintendents who are involved in our work, and they have told us, we've squeezed everything we can out of K-12 over the last couple of years. We've been as efficient as possible. We've had some great outcomes, but we know we need to go lower or younger. And it's very exciting to see, to see what the president, and we'd had some messages over the past two years, I would say, that his Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, is very interested in the early years as well. So, well, it remains to be seen where this will go, but I think it's exciting that the issue is at a tipping point. I mean, it's nationally, statewide, and in many communities across the state. So you mentioned a lot of the press. This is just a summary of some of the stuff we've seen in the last six weeks, two months, including letter to the editor from Ada, something here from me, and then a whole lot of op-eds and editorials. You have a copy of the editorial, Tuesday's, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday's editorial from the Boston Globe, really supporting the governor's proposed investments in early education and care. So the other, just the other piece, this is the legislation that we filed with the legislature that was passed, and it really just creates third grade reading at a high-level position in state government and allows for the various agencies to really think about how to streamline, reduce duplication of, really think about what are the resources and initiatives being targeted to early learning and literacy. So this is all the statewide context for the, for the work you guys are doing here. So what can you do in Milton? This goes back to the, there are a couple of things. I'll go quickly through the research that, I have copies here. I don't know if you guys have the report.
I, I have it in a book for them tonight.
Okay. So the first thing you can do is think about how to implement the recommendations from this report. Thank you. So we have focused on children zero to five for years, for six or seven years, and then really started thinking about an outcome for children and understanding third grade was a critical benchmark of success, understanding the states made no progress, literally, in really increasing the percentage of children who are reading proficiency proficiently. We commissioned this report from Noni LaSalle at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, who's a national literacy and dual-language learning expert, to really understand and identify some key strategies that could be implemented to really change that trajectory for children.
And Carolyn, that was the basis of our initiative.
Yes. So a lot of this should look familiar. So what, what it will take, it's defining reading success, ensuring that there are language-rich literacy environments wherever children are, and aligning solutions across the birth to third grade, continuing recognizing that children are not starting their path to literacy acquisition in kindergarten. So defining reading success, these are some of the things that are appropriate examples for children in early elementary grades. It's not just about, you know, understand, or read, being able to read the words. It's comprehension. It's writing logically, speaking coherently, understanding different types of texts. So I think just having this baseline appreciation of what reading success is takes us a step beyond MCAS. But it's critical when you think about what services we can provide here in Milton. Ensuring high-quality experiences wherever children are, starting from birth. So that's, we know across the state, a little more than half of our children are in a formal early education and care program. I forget what the data for Milton is. It's in your thing. But wherever children are, whether it's in an early education and care program, in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and even infant toddlers, wherever they are, making sure those are language-rich learning environments. If they're in faith, you know, faith community, really engaging, making it a community responsibility to make sure they're given the opportunity to nurture love of language and learning. Aligning solutions, there, Noni has five very specific recommendations that are included in her report around program design, assessment, professional development, curriculum, and assess, and partnerships with families. The program design one is basically really being, ensuring there's fidelity to research, really being very clear about dosage and how, making sure that the program that is ultimately designed and implemented is true, as I said, to the research and what we really know works, the frequency of it, the consistency of the implementation. It's got to be very well thought out. Assessment is about both the child as well as the setting. It's a, you know, there are people who are far more expert at assessment than I am, but it's very, it's, I think, too often we focus on one versus the other, and we really need to think about both if we're really going to be creating a system that works for all children. These are some of the examples that I'm sure you guys are familiar with about, as we think about the child-based assessment. We need to measure both the print-level skills and the meaning-based skills. Make sure that comprehension is there and not just reading the words. Professional development, too often, all the time, we see, you know, districts that do one day of professional development, or even at the state level, you know, one day of professional development between EEC and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. Professional development needs to be well thought out, continuous loop, feedback loop, that really go back to how the teachers, you know, in behaving in the classroom, and really a much more comprehensive, you know, holistic perspective on professional development. This is the key lever here. I mean, from what we're hearing from the experts, if we can get the professional development right, that will go a long way to really helping our children. And then the curriculum, I know we have a lot of work that's been done around the common core. I think this is on the slate of all the things that we could do, kind of one of the easier pieces, because the common core is there, and it's about the training and professional development around that and the assessment around that. And then family engagement. This frankly is one of the most difficult ones. I think there are a lot of best practices around this country in terms of effective family engagement models that impact literacy outcomes for children. It's a continuing body of research that's growing, which we're monitoring. But we know families are children's first families, or first teachers, and we really need to provide the families with the support they need to fulfill that role. So the second thing that you can do, and we've talked about this, is we are part of a national movement around third grade reading proficiency. There's a group called the Campaign for Grade-Level Reading, which is spearheaded by the Casey Foundation, the Annie Casey Foundation, which has started a network of communities who are focused on third grade reading proficiency. There are 124 communities across the country currently participating, five in Massachusetts. They are opening up the network for more communities to participate. Participating communities get all types of resources and best practices and just access to information. We work very closely with several of the communities here in Massachusetts to help raise awareness within their communities of the importance of early learning and literacy. We provide talking points. It's a good, you know, you do, it's good to know that your work is based in a broader context, a national context, which kind of complements what the president's doing, you know, at the state level, what Governor Patrick's doing. As part of, last year, one of the strategies was to partner with the National Civic League around what's called the All-America City Award. You guys might be familiar with it. They, every year, they give awards to cities on various issues like recycling. And last year, it was around third grade reading proficiency. That, so that was a big deal for communities to really get involved. And two of our communities in Massachusetts wound up being not, being called All-America Cities, Pittsfield and Springfield, around third grade reading proficiency, which was very exciting. So these are some of the things you get access to as a participating community. The other exciting thing about what's going on here in Massachusetts is, one of the goals of the campaign is to ensure that in 12 states by 2020, there's a 100% increase in the percentage of low-income children reading proficiently on third grade tests. And I think they're really looking to Massachusetts to help move that forward. So it would be great if Milton was part of this work. So the third thing, this is very timely, is obviously advocate for the proposed investments in early ed in the state budget. And then the fourth thing, you should really think about using my organization as a resource. This is what we do. This is what I raise money for us to be able to do. We have a blog that is very, has a good local and national following, really highlighting research and policy developments and best practices around early learning and literacy and reading proficiency. You can sign up just to get updates on our campaign at earlyeducationforall.org. And please use us as a resource. I mean, I'm right here, so we should. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, first of all. I just have, you know, it doesn't, a lot of what you've said doesn't really surprise me in talking to a couple of the principals in the elementary schools. They talked about the, the difference in children showing up who've had no preschool experience at all and, you know, the norm, which is two or three years, sometimes full-time preschool. And I know I've talked to Ada about this as well. On the list you, you gave us, it says that we don't have in Milton any pre-K centers that meet that, you know, goal. But that's, I would assume that's because it's founded by a grant or is a low, low-cost program. Obviously, we have preschools, but we don't have anything that meets those needs. You know, the, I did read about the governor's initiative long ago, and I'm just curious as how we can accomplish that. And we do have low-cost alternatives for preschool in our schools, but they're part-time, and I think that doesn't meet the needs of most parents who need a full-time daycare, maybe a grandparent or someone's watching these children, and they can't afford a full-time preschool care, and they can't afford to put them, their children in a part-time preschool care. So what, what kind of things should we be looking at?
I mean, that's a great question. Part of the challenge here in Massachusetts is, high-quality pre-K is very much on the backs of parents today, because the state has put in such a small percentage compared to other states. I mean, that's part of our work. I think it's around, first and foremost, around funding. And we had an event at the State House last week that featured some experts from New Jersey who were required through a court order to provide high-quality pre-kindergarten to every, to three- and four-year-olds. They went first to the public schools. The public schools didn't have the capacity, so they, basically, the funding goes to the public schools, and then they contract out with the private providers who have to, do have to be of similar quality. The teacher has to have a BA. The teacher's paid a parity, which across the state, I mean, right now, the average salary for early educators, $22,000 versus what, you know, a kindergarten teacher, a pre-K teacher at a public school gets. So I think it's an issue of funding, first and foremost. On the issue of the UPK program, it's another, it's a funding issue. It's funded at $7 million a year. And one, no, or maybe, no, it might even be down to 4.6 million a year. It serves 6,600 kids across the state. There's 244,000 children, three to five, in the state. So, I mean, and I think they actually targeted it first. It was created back in 2007 to children living in low-income communities, so not low-income children, which would affect us here in Milton. But I think it truly is an issue of funding, and a lot of our work is around, is around getting that funding. I do think in Milton, and I know Ada's done a lot of this work already, it's just trying to understand, you know, who are the children coming from the preschools? What, what preschools are they? What curriculum are they using? Are there opportunities to do shared professional development? Is the data tracking in place? I know there's parental consents, and I don't know what percent of parents actually sign those and the data tracks with the children, but at least to start having a handle on who the children are and where they are. The other thing we've been talking to some of our communities about are to get unique identifier numbers assigned to children from birth in communities, no matter what publicly-funded system they're accessing. So most of them are start by accessing the healthcare system. So to be able to assign a number to that child then, so we can really understand who are the systems that are impacting their lives and how can we make sure that data is shared about that child across, whether it's health or, you know, WIC or whatever the systems are. That could ultimately help the teacher, you know, the kindergarten teacher when they come in. Is that helpful?
Yeah, no, I think it is. I just, it just seems kind of frustrating for, if, even if we reach out to some of these parents in Milton, where could they go and look for something that would meet their needs? I feel like we're at a, you know, I don't know how to help them, you know? And that does seem to be a huge thing. We've now got them in the full-day kindergarten, which I think is great. I mean, that's a huge measure. But how can we get to them even before that? Because I hate to think of wasting that time and then having them start already behind other students. And it definitely does seem to be a, a cost thing, you know?
And the other problem is the, the rate of reimbursement that the state provides, providers serving low-income children doesn't come near to covering their costs. So it doesn't make economic sense, especially for a lot of the standalone, you know, excellent programs we have here, for them to accept those subsidies.
I was just going to say that the same thing, that many of the preschool programs in town are high-quality, but the cost of doing business is substantially more than the state reimburses for subsidies for preschool. And so they really, they have to really take a loss if they accept subsidies for children, and some of them do that. But what we find is that many of the families who are eligible for these subsidies wind up having to go out of town for preschool to find a program that will accept a subsidy, if they in fact can even access one, because there are so many, 30,000 kids on the waiting list. So it's a really good question about where these children are. One other thing, though, that is happening in Milton that you should be aware of, and I think look at as a potential for other partnerships, is the work of the Milton Early Childhood Alliance. They're also funded through the Department of Early Education and Care, and their efforts have shifted. Whereas it used to provide subsidies for low-income families for preschool, now is focused more on the family engagement piece. And so they're doing quite a bit of play groups with parents, where parents are learning about early literacy and their role in teaching a love of reading and things that they can do with their children at home, bringing together parents with babies and with toddlers and with preschoolers who may not be in preschool. So they're, they're getting together regularly throughout the year. We had a project that we did collaboration with MICA and funded through the Children's Trust Fund that we ran at Tucker School two years ago before we lost that funding. But it was a very successful project that was targeted to Haitian families with young children, and it was very powerful. And I think there are some great opportunities. As Carolyn mentioned, one of those important components is family engagement. And if there's a way that the schools can connect with families even before they're in kindergarten in creative ways, it could really make a difference.
This is just such an interesting topic. I, I think we could talk about this all night, and I want to just piggyback on a few things that you just said, because that outreach to families is just so imperative. I mean, we try and do it at the school level, but you're so right. It has to happen early. And it tied in so nicely with what you were saying earlier, when you were talking about reading success and the rich vocabularies of families, that they have to start talking to their kids at a very young age. But you began the presentation talking about proficiency. But you began the presentation talking about proficiency. And proficiency doesn't mean the same thing to all people. So there were a couple pages in here that I thought really articulated that without saying it. So on the page where it said reading success and it had defining reading success, this one here, I think that this is such a great visual because parents don't always understand, you know? You talk to them and they say, "But my child reads so, so fluently." And they, they can read lots of words, and they don't stop and stutter with their words. But if they don't have that comprehension, and that's the piece that plays that critical role when they get to third grade and beyond, because if they can't read by the time they're in third grade, they're going to have to learn, they're going to have to read to learn when they get in fourth and fifth. So this is such a valuable document that you've shared with us tonight, and it would be wonderful if we could get it in the hands of more people.
There's also, I mean, thank you. And we're doing a lot of work thinking about how to make this tangible and meaningful to parents across the wide, you know, cultures and where talking to children might not necessarily be intuitive in the beginning. On the back of this is a very interesting chart that really talks about some typically-developing child and where their journey is in terms of language and literacy acquisition and what they might, the number of words they might, you know, need to know at a certain age. And we found this to be very helpful. Being part of this national work, it's also very exciting to see how other communities are engaging, like the pediatric community. Reach Out and Read is a very big part of our work. We're co-sponsoring an event next Friday with the Massachusetts Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics and Jack Schoenkov Center for the Developing Child, all about how we can work together across sectors to really focus on children, you know, the faith community. So it is, I mean, it's got to be a community ownership issue. It can't just be the public schools. It can't just be the early education and care providers. It's got to, which also is what's exciting about this national stuff, because it requires, being part of this national network, requires a cross-functional team of leaders from within a community, representing the schools, representing maybe health, maybe business, to really say, "We're going to own this issue for children." And you're right, it's not just about proficiency. When we met with the governor, he asked us that. He's like, "What's this word, proficiency?" And it's about understanding where children, typically-developing children should be, what's appropriate developmental milestones. Third-grade reading proficiency is what resonates. It's what we're measured on. It's what, you know, policymakers, it's a way to get funding in and focus the lens. But we need to do a better job of really identifying the key metrics of success as the children are, you know, progressing through.
And just a follow-up to that. I have been speaking with Ms. Superintendent Gormley about this since the governor first started talking about it. And, you know, our challenge in any school district, I think, but certainly here in Milton, is the space. Even if we did have the funding to provide for, you know, a preschool program, then we just don't really have. I mean, we have beautiful buildings, but they're already, you know, filling up very, very quickly. So that's, that's a challenge as well that, you know, communities need to look at.
And what we've done here in Massachusetts, unlike in other states, other states have said, "We're going to have a pre-K program. It's going to be two and a half hours in the public school." We said, "We are going to be agnostic as to where it's delivered, as long as recognizing that children are..." The bulk of our children in a preschool, preschool-aged children are in a private provider right now in Massachusetts. Like 10% are in family childcare and like 5% are in Head Start and about 20% in the public schools. But across the state, the bulk are in a community program of some sort. And our objective has always been, which is the basis of the Quality Rating Improvement System, is to ensure that wherever those children are is of sufficient quality, is equal quality. We have a long way to go because of the funding constraints. But I think we can really learn from states like New Jersey, which use the public schools as the hub through which the money is dispersed either, it either stays within the public schools or is dispersed to the community providers that meet certain quality criteria.
Mr. Walker.
So, thank you very much. This was an interesting presentation, and I think it underscores the importance of this initiative that we're undertaking. And it's always good to hear that we have expertise right here in town. So we hope that as we embark on this initiative, you will help us and guide us to some extent as to whether we've got the right set of plans, whether we're using the right measures, whether, when we get some early results, that requires us to reset it all. So I hope that you'll stay involved to some extent as we embark on this. Some of what you said about professional development really resonated. And we have recognized the importance of professional development, but I, if you've got a framework or even a curriculum on what you would consider to be a robust professional development program in this area, I would really be interested in seeing that. Because I'm cautious about whether we've underestimated the amount of professional development we'll need to do to really equip our teachers to be successful here. And that's true. We've got a number of advancement initiatives where we've recognized the need for professional development. But even with the schedule that we've set, I'm just not sure we've allocated enough time. So any information you have in that regard would be much appreciated.
Ms. Begley-Jones.
Thank you. That was a really great presentation. Oh. Thanks. Great presentation, very helpful. And I have to say, this is fabulous, the back cover. I don't know if there's something else we could do with this, but it's, I'm reading it, and, you know, I have kids and I work in education. I'm like, "Oh, yeah, that's right."
Right.
So it's a really helpful guide, and it just, I don't know. So there might be something we could do with it, because I just think it's such a great tool. And then my question is actually for Glenn, because it's a math question. But, I mean, you may also...
Early literacy leads to improved math outcomes.
Exactly. But you have such, you have such a great deal of really fascinating information and really well-done. But on page seven, where it talks about key educational benchmarks and says percentages, percentage of third grades, graders who score proficient or above, in Milton, it's 71%. What does that work out to be numbers for that and for the high school? To put a real name on it for me? So in other words, 71%. So we have how many students in grade three?
300.
300 students in grade three. So that would be...
71%.
75%. 70%.
So that would be...
210.
About 215.
210. And then for high school? It's, how many kids we have in high school?
Less probably, 260 plus.
Two, 260?
In a grade.
Okay. And so almost 94% of them graduate. So numbers-wise, what do we have left? I'm not a math person. How many kids don't graduate?
Keep in mind also, like, when these, the 2012 MCAT scores came out, the administration's whole focus was leading the nation best 10th-grade scores ever. And we took a call from the Globe, and the reporter was like, "Well, isn't it the case that children who might have been, isn't the real story here a third grade? Because kids who might have been suffering in third grade...
Right.
...70 years ago would have dropped out by this point?" He said, "Yes."
So how many kids in Milton don't actually graduate?
I think that's...
Last year, year before?
Yeah.
I can't tell you any. I believe the state data that is provided and the facts that are provided by Ms. Lyons is actually aligned here. The definition by the state is a four-year dropout rate and/or a five-year dropout rate, and I believe ours is less than 1%. But I can check her stats.
My, my point is just really simple, is that too often, we can say in Milton, "Oh, that's not my kid." But how many, is that 10 kids? Is that 20 kids? Is that 100 kids? Because then it becomes more, I think, of a community issue. We identify how many kids we don't have that are graduating. 94% sounds really high, but there's another 6%. Where are they? And when did they, when did we start losing them? That they dropped out? In this day and age in Milton, that we have 6% of our kids drop out of high school? Just makes absolutely no sense to me, even though I think it's a very good rate, 94%. But what are we doing for the other six? So that's why I wanted a number. Glenn, I'm disappointed that you didn't have that right off the top of your head. Thank you.
And so for the school committee, Carolyn has suggested that we put a letter intent in and see if, in fact, the competition will be big cities, but with our initiative and our advancement budget and any local help we can get with our application to see if we'll be able to join that organization and, again, heighten the awareness.
It's not a competition anyway. It's just, you know, you have to demonstrate sufficient political will locally and convening to really warrant being part of it, but it's not, you're not competing against any large cities or anything.
It looked, it looked like it's selective, though.
It is. I mean, I think some of the criteria are hard, the processes that you have to, or some might perceive as hard. I think it would be fabulous for Milton to be part of this growing, you know, it is, we're seeing a lot more communities in Massachusetts who are focused on this, both, you know, with those who are the gateway cities, as with a lot of low-income children, as well as those who are more, you know, mixed income like we are here. I think it would be great to be part of the momentum both here and nationally. I'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much.
This was outstanding. On behalf of the system, I want to thank both of you. And as the school committee said, we have a partnership now, and we'll just strengthen that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Briefly, we were able to meet our future problem solvers. I want to thank the Milton High School teachers, PS teachers, and all of the parents, citizens, and students who attended the Milton High School Faculty Talent Show last Thursday or Friday night, a very successful fundraiser that the profits totally go to supplement and really take the place of the taxpayers' dollar to fund clubs, activities, and athletics. Last Saturday, Milton High School hosted the statewide ending debate competition. There were several high schools here from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. I'm proud to tell you, the topic was, I thought that, had I known what the topic was, they could have used Mr. Walker as a resource, was healthcare. And at the end of eight rounds, the most, one of the most extraordinary days I've ever witnessed, we had two young women from Newton North competing against Chris DeCida and Alyssa Jeffries. And right here in the auditorium, there had to be 150 spectators, and it was extraordinary. They had, each would present, then they would go back and forth with one another. They would ask one another questions on their research, and then they gave closing statements. 20 minutes later, all through the day, the judges would announce who the winners were. And so our team lost to Newton North, a veteran team. We've been in this statewide debate for four years, and I want to thank the school committee for supporting that initiative. Of course, at Milton High and the after-school club, it was an extraordinary day. I should also recognize Isabel Smith and Cormac Connors, who went right to the seventh round. I believe there were eight rounds during the day. So it was, you would have been so proud of all the Milton Public School students who stayed the whole day to support their team, and it was very, very exciting. In the area of our screening committees, we have been working with our screening committee for our Assistant Superintendent for Business. We have a committee. We screened the applications. We came up with what we were looking for in Assistant Superintendent for Business. We came up with questions. We did interviewing. And I'm going to survey the school committee and the leadership team to come together for final interviews on two candidates. Just this week, we met with the Tucker Screening Committee. I want to recognize Steve Praxia, Kim Terry, Susie Ancotti, parents from the Tucker, Tucker teachers, administrators, Unit B representatives. We came together. We brainstormed what we're looking for in a new Tucker principal. They are doing their homework last night and tonight, sending in who they want to interview. We'll come together tomorrow. The process works, as we said. If one of them wants to interview the candidate, we're bringing all the candidates in from the paper review. Tomorrow, we'll come up with our questions, and we'll begin interviewing candidates. I'm pleased to tell you, Mr. Phelan, I believe we have 51 applications for the Tucker principalship. I want to remind the public that athletic, spring athletic signups are happening now. Is that right, Ms. Begley-Jones? And again, to check your calendar, this is, the month of March is going to continue into the beginning of April with National Arts and Music Month. Tonight, you know, Grade 5 through 12 Band is downstairs. Reminding the public, we do not have school on Friday, Good Friday. And for the high school, April 3rd will be one of those half-day professional development days that we're piloting this year. Thank you.
Care to mention your mid-cycle reviews?
Oh, excuse me. I want to, again, we're working with Race to the Top Districts, implemented last year a new evaluation model in Massachusetts. You have seen it in the press. And Milton, we're working with the union now, using the state model, coming up with what we're going to propose and bring to the school committee to use next year as a new evaluation model. This year, the school committee is evaluating the superintendent through the new model. And so that requires a mid-cycle review. The evaluation really goes out over two years. We call it mid-year. It really shouldn't be mid-year. It should be mid-cycle because the cycle continues. So I met with Ms. Sheridan. I appreciate her mentoring on this and her feedback. What I've provided you tonight, I've created a grid of all of the objectives that we approved in, that I was going to work with over the years, over this year and the next year. And I've provided you the documentation to support those that we've achieved, some that are still in progress, and some that we haven't met. So I wanted to explain this to you, rather than delivering it to your homes, which I first indicated to you in an email, what I was going to do. I knew you probably waited all day Sunday for the delivery. I apologize. So I'm giving you that to review, and then perhaps at our next meeting for your reactions, feedback before that time or next week. And I probably do is email you tomorrow, the information from the state, any redirection, new initiatives. And I think I said to Mr. Walker, and I said to Ms. Sheridan, this was, I think, perhaps more valuable for me than it will be for you or the viewing public. Checklist, and I'm proud to tell you, the system was involved in my mid-cycle review. And I was proud to tell them, you know, that we needed this kind of data to inform the school committee where we were on these different objectives. So I appreciate your reaction, suggestions, criticism, additions, deletions. Do not hesitate.
Ms. Sherrod.
I just want to add that when Ms. Gormley and I began discussing this and, you know, reflecting on the training that we all had about the new evaluation system, the new evaluation tool, the level of detail that we see here is nothing that I had in mind. And as usual, Ms. Gormley, I think, has gone above and beyond to just demonstrate all of these initiatives and that were outlined in our goals. And I'm sure if the Department of Education got a hold of this, it might be lifted up as an exemplar for superintendent evaluation.
After you read, after you, after you read it. And it's very interesting that, as I was working through that, whether, you know, you wanted me to do a narrative or whether this met your goals for this mid-cycle. I didn't do the narrative. I did the checklist with the supporting materials, but I can do the narrative if you choose. And that concludes my report.
So what we'll do is we'll include this on our next agenda for feedback from the committee on the superintendent's mid-cycle review. I have to say that I agree with you. The act of creating this is probably far more valuable than the act of reading it. I mean, it's one...
It was. Very valuable for me, and for the system, I believe.
With my students, I had an exam this week, and I said, "You can create a one-page summary of everything we've done in the course." And I said, "If you do it, you won't need it." Because the act of creating it is more valuable in many cases than actually the finished product, because it really forces you to analyze all the different things you do. So we'll put this on our agenda for next time.
And I have to tell you, Carolyn Lyons has been very valuable with setting the stage for this early literacy, information, giving information to our staff. But it even became apparent tonight, finding vehicles to reach out to our families.
All right. So we will move off the superintendent's report?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So before you start your report, it looks like my son James will be back for his fifth year at Camp Cunningham this year. So I'm going to recuse myself on the... year at Camp Cunningham this year. So I'm going to recuse myself on the community schools item, and anything else having to do with community schools and Camp Cunningham.
Okay.
So someone will let me know when I can come back?
All right. A couple items on my report. Over the last few meetings, we've had executive sessions that have dealt with some contract negotiation issues. Some of them, we have come to settlement and agreement on, and we need to reaffirm our votes that were taken in executive session in open session. So the first item, as Mr. Walker alluded to, deals with the community schools. We are looking at giving a 2% raise to those hourly workers in the community schools in fiscal year 14. They have not had a rate adjustment in three years. These are not the administrators of the community schools, but in fact, are the people who are in the classrooms with the kids over the summer and during the year. So I would entertain a motion to reaffirm the vote we took in executive session to award a 2% salary increase to the hourly workers in the community schools.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Ms. Padera. Any comments on that? Hearing none, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor? That is unanimous. If someone could wave to Mr. Walker somewhere, deep in the corners of this room somewhere-
I think Dr. Walsh will flag him down for us. He'll be right back, I think.
Okay. Second item, concerns are reallocation of duties for this year. As people know, the Assistant Superintendent for Business left us in mid-February for another position. We are currently in the process of hiring someone for July 1. In the interim, we have had a retired Assistant Superintendent for Business working with us two days a week, on a part-time basis, to cover much of the functions of that office along with the staff. However, there were other duties that Mr. Gillis performed that weren't directly related to the finance office. In particular, he did oversight on our custodians and some labor management relations as well. That, because we only have someone in two days a week, our part-time interim person was unable to do. So what has happened, of course, is that someone else has to do it, and someone else has been Mr. Phelan, who's picked up this, in addition to all his other things that he has to do, which has resulted in increased workload, increased number of hours, increased number of days spent in this building. So the, at our executive session, the school committee has voted to give a $5,000 stipend to Mr. Gillis for the remainder of this year to perform those duties.
Alan.
Mr. Phelan.
Phelan, what did I just say?
Mr. Gillis.
I said Phelan. Sorry.
Sure, Matt would be happy to hear that.
No, I'm sure Mr. Gillis would be wonderful, yeah, Mr. Phelan. So I would, again, entertain a motion to reaffirm the vote we took in executive session to award a $5,000 stipend for performing these duties for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved. Second.
So moved by Ms. Begley-Jones, seconded by Ms. Padera. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is unanimous as well. Third, concerns the superintendent's salary for this year. The superintendent always insists that her contract is the last to be negotiated in any given year, and this year was no exception. So even though we had discussed this as a school committee quite a while ago, she has steadfastly refused to let me discuss it with her until everyone else was settled. But in the interim, everyone else has been settled for fiscal 13. So again, in a previous executive session, the school committee voted to award the superintendent a 3% year, a 3% raise for fiscal year 13, the current fiscal year we are in. So this will be retroactive to last July 1. So again, I'd entertain a motion to reaffirm the vote taken in executive session to award the superintendent a 3% raise for this year.
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Walker.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Padera. Any discussion on that?
Just a little bit.
Go right ahead.
I'd just like to reiterate the discussion that went on in executive session, which was universally positive and quite emphatic about the superintendent's performance and the fact that all of us thought that this increase was both reasonable and appropriate. So it's well-deserved, and I wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you.
Ms. Begley-Jones.
Can I just echo that? And I apologize for not saying about Mr. Phelan as well. I don't know too hard a-working people than these two to my left. I mean, it's unbelievable. We all know and agree with how hard these folks work for us, for the town of Milton. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on this as well. All those in favor? Again, unanimous. Security update, just to say, very briefly, we, the School Building Committee, and this will be slightly alluded to later on, has about $70,000 left in its appropriation. And at its last meeting, which doesn't happen too often, but it did happen, it has voted to release that money to the schools for the purpose of doing card reader entrances to the various different schools. Mr. Walker, you want to mention anything more about that?
I do, I have a long list.
Oh.
I was prepared.
Go right ahead.
So as you said, the Card Access Project is well along. That will provide increased security at each building, and will control access into the buildings. We expect that that will be, the physical work will be completed by the end of June, and that the software programming and protocols will be in place for September opening. We have, I'm pleased to report that the bidirectional antenna on the roof of the high school that will improve communications within the high school for our police department, that work, again, has been completed, and we're hoping that that will be operational within two weeks. We included $100,000 in the capital request that we hope will be approved by town meeting, at the Maytown meeting. If that occurs, then that will allow us to do some additional physical improvements at any of the schools that need it, but primarily at the Glover and the Cunningham, and some additional work at the high school. And then finally, the Deputy Chief Charlie Paris, Sergeant Jack Richmond, Maria Poles, and I attended a School Security Task Force that was hosted by attorney, District Attorney Michael Morrissey. And at that, he announced that he would be funding threat assessments upon application from the school districts for particular buildings. We have submitted such a request for the high school, and we're hopeful that that will be funded. And I would just like to commend the superintendent, and Chief Wells, and Jack Richmond, and Bill Ritchie. We've been meeting on a fairly regular basis as a smaller task force, and we've been able to get a number of these projects moving, and I'm very pleased with the progress thus far.
And that would conclude.
And we have something to say. First, Mr. Phelan?
No, I would like to echo Member Walker's sentiments towards the progress that's being made with Chief Wells and Bill Ritchie. But to the credit of the town, Member Walker has gone out and advocated for funding through our capital budget, through the School Building Committee, and in other sources, that this, all this work, all this infrastructure that will be in place for years, with the antenna and the swipe cards, and some of the updates that we may be able to make to our schools regarding safety and security, will be in place for a long time, and quite frankly, out of no funds taken from the school department operating budget. These are funds that the town has allocated through very creative means, and that advocating by Member Walker, and the school committee in general, and the police chief and Superintendent Gormly, I think the taxpayers should know, and the school parents should know, that we are very fortunate, that not a lot of communities have been able to put these types of initiatives forward due to lack of funding, and we've been able to do so, not at the expense of teaching and learning at any point in time. So thank you to Member Walker, and thank you to your community, and Chief Wells as well.
And I want to say, we have a taskmaster in Member Walker, and it's a group that's come together, representing all the different, the value of the meetings, all the different representatives of all the different parts of the school system. It really brings you back to security, is so much a part of our lives, from before school till the minute school ends and closes here at 10:00 or 11:00 at night. So I appreciate your leadership and the team that we have developed, and the work that's being done.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the Finance Subcommittee Report. Ms. Kelly is unavailable this evening.
We have a PowerPoint presentation. We, do you want to begin? Why don't you begin? You give entry?
So the superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Phelan have been working with the Finance Subcommittee. Since the Warrant Committee meeting, where the 1.9 million was awarded to the schools, we've been working on this list. It is largely what you've seen before, but I'm pleased to report that with some work by the superintendent and her leadership team, I had asked that we make no cuts to art and music, or to middle school athletics, and I think that they have been able to work, rework the list in a way that we'll be able to accomplish those objectives. So I'm very pleased about that. But Assistant Superintendent Phelan will take you through it, and then we're asking for a vote to finalize what the actual cuts will be, with the understanding that there is some possibility that the Warrant Committee might be able to find a small amount of money based on some of their estimates of local aid, which we and they think are conservative. So we'll see how that works out.
You want to take it?
Sure. The hope of the presentation tonight was to communicate clearly to the community and the school committee, a quick timeline of the history of the budget process, to remind everybody and bring them from the fall, in what we were asking for as a school committee and a school department, in our work with the Warrant Committee leading up to the current date of March 27. First and foremost, on December 5, and I have attached these dates and timelines to links, where all this information is available to parents on the web. So this presentation will be on the web tomorrow, where they can just click on and look at past presentations in a very user-friendly manner. On the 5, the advancement budget presentation was given to the school committee. The advancement budget was spoken to tonight by Superintendent Gormly, through Ms. Lyons' presentation, where the leadership team got together and decided, through a lot of research and brainstorming, what would move the district forward. On December 12, the budget presentation was given to the school committee for FY14. Between January 23 and 29, the Budget Drivers in Reduction presentation was given to the Milton Public Schools staff, the Milton School Committee, the Town of Milton Warrant Committee, and all school PTOs. That full budget and full presentations of each of those nights and presentations is on the web at these links. And this presentation will be posted tomorrow, so folks can access that information. Just to remind everyone what the FY14 budget drivers were, when we developed the fiscal year 14 budget, we first and foremost wanted to address some of the parts of the Milton Public Schools that we felt needed to be shored up and advanced. So we created an advancement budget with initiatives in emphasizing early literacy, based on the work by our key speaker tonight, Ms. Lyons, closing the proficiency gaps K to 12, in advancing science and STEM, science, technology, and engineering and math initiatives at every grade level. We were very, very excited that those advancement initiatives were well-received by the school committee and the public, and fully funded, as you will see later in our FY14 budget thus far, with the Warrant Committee and the town. This budget was also made up of some contractual obligations, which we would also call bills, if it was from a household perspective. There are technology costs involved, that we have year-to-year annual subscriptions and costs, special education mandated costs that we pay as bills each year to support and service all of our students on IEPs, transportation expenses, as well as facilities expenses that are obligations and or bills that the district has to pay regardless of how much money is allocated each year. The FY14 budget request by the school committee was $38,379,680. It was voted by the school committee on December 12. The Warrant Committee had asked for a level-dollar budget from all departments, inclusive of the schools, which would have meant $35,412,344, which was based on our FY13 budget. So given what our school committee had requested, along with the administration, and what we had for funding at that point in time, there was a $2.9 million gap in the funding for FY14. We were very fortunate, through support of the Warrant Committee and advocating to the Warrant Committee by the members of the school committee, that the Warrant Committee had allocated early in the process a $1.5 million revenue source for the Milton Public Schools in their request, above level-dollar, before we even went to them for a final presentation later in the process. With that said, with that $1.5 in hand, thankfully from the Warrant Committee, the reductions that we need to present to everyone as of January 23 of this year, would have been $1.4 million worth of reductions. So I bring that back to everybody, so we can remember that what these actual reductions look like, that we had presented back in late January, on January 23. And if folks remember, we broke these into levels where we wanted to have a set of reductions that we hoped we would get back, and then some reductions that we felt we might need to make because of the dollar amount that was attached to this request by the Warrant Committee. So we presented this list to all of our PTOs at each school, we presented it to the staff, and we presented it to the school committee. And these reductions were presented with a lot of detail as to the cause or the impact that would happen if these reductions did take place. They range from band corps strings and nurses, to teachers in the classrooms, and reductions in custodians and infrastructure, to how we support our students with educational assistance, all the way down to our residency coordinator. We were happy to announce in February 11 of 2013 that the Warrant Committee recommended a budget increase for FY14 of $1.5 million, and added an extra $43,155 to that request on behalf of the schools. They also were able to provide the Milton Public Schools an additional $440,000 from free cash for non-recurring expenditures. What that basically means is that we, as a school department, had a net result of needing to reduce the budget by $984,000. We were able to, with the money given by the Warrant Committee, restore these very important positions, as mentioned by Member Walker prior to the presentation. We are restoring teachers of band strings and chorus, teacher of future problem-solving, which was the great program that you saw presented tonight, advanced art in our classrooms, the nurse at the Cunningham Colicott, teacher of world language at the middle school, teacher of social studies at the middle school, teacher of art, again at the middle school, teacher of music at the middle school, teacher of child studies at our high school, and extending for next year, funding for extracurricular clubs at the middle school, the high school, and the stipends that we have for club advisors at the elementary school. These restorations were realized with the extra funding that was given or approved by the Warrant Committee, and that will now need to go to town meeting for approval for the FY14 budget. As you can see, this list is a little shorter than the larger list that we had presented before, so there still will be some reductions if further funding is not found. So let's recap. We had a $38 million request. The request was supported by the Warrant Committee with $440,000 and $1.5 million. So the current reductions that we would have to do to our budget at this point in time, as of March 27, 2013, is that the Milton Public Schools would have to reduce their budget request by $984,000 moving forward. What does that look like in positions? It's the remaining reductions that we had on the original list. It's the remaining reductions that we had on the original list that you have now isolated. These positions in the Milton Public Schools and these services in the Milton Public Schools have not, will not be funded as of this date with the current Warrant Committee recommendation to Town Meeting for this coming year. Those positions are teacher of history at the high school, teacher of phys ed math, phys ed health at the middle school. That was a part-time position, that teacher of health, a part-time business teacher at the high school for business, full-time, a .8 world language Spanish teacher at the high school, related specialists in related services to all schools, a custodian, our building substitutes reduced, administrative non-teaching personnel amount that we are preparing to reduce in our administrative personnel line, another custodian. We will be reorganizing our educational assistants to work only part of the day instead of a whole day. They will work 80% of their week and not 100% of their work week as it stands right now. We have increased all fees, and those fees have been approved by the school committee. We will be charging back to community schools for more offsets to what we charge them for rent, for lack of a better term, as our district acts as landlord to our community schools, and we have to charge back revenues and expenses to that account. Our residency coordinator has been reduced by .2, which is 20% of her work week, and we have reduced our library aid at the elementary school mainly because in our advancement budget, we have an additional librarian media center specialist being implemented for a position, so this position is no longer needed. So as you look at these positions, we know that these are in priority order, that we would like to restore these, and we are prepared fully to make these reductions at the bottom because a lot of these are reorganizations. But these positions at the top are very hard for the district to move forward without. But this is the list based on the leadership team's input and the school committee being apprised through our Finance Subcommittee.
And so I think it's important, thank you, Mr. Phelan, to say on this cut reduction list, if we add the number of teachers who are in front of students, that would total 3.4. One history teacher, .7 PE health, .4 business, .8 world language, .5 teacher specialist, correct? And then two custodians. These are all individuals who are working in the Milton Public Schools. And the administrative non-teaching personnel is a three FTE, as Mr. Phelan referred to. We're still working on that cut. And the unity reorganization, it says 4.6 FTEs. That totals reduction if you added up all those part-time people.
That would reduce almost 30 educational assistants to .8 status. They will no longer be full-time.
So working with the Finance Subcommittee, discussing the presentation, listening to school committee members and the public, what we would restore, our recommendation is being made tonight to you. But these are real positions, working with the Warrant Committee and the community, going out to every school for the PTO presentations. That's a total of 14.2 individuals who are actually working in the Milton Public Schools if we do not get more funding for next year.
Ms. Sheridan.
So we probably only need one line of custodian, and it could say two FTEs. But that's, that's a real concern to me because when we completed all of our new and renovated schools, we increased the size by, I don't remember the percentage anymore, I used to know that, but significantly increased the size of our buildings. And now we're saying we're cutting two custodians. And we're already down, again, I don't have those numbers in my head, but that's a real concern for me that I just don't understand. And I have to commend the custodians. They do a magnificent job keeping these buildings in wonderful condition, which is just what we've been charged to do, you know, to now that we've built them, rebuilt them and renovated them. So that's a real concern, and I, and I, I guess if they have to be cut, I'd like to see them higher on that list than, than where they are right now because. We've been hearing this for years.
We were trying to provide a broad view of what we think the reduction should be. I agree that having two reductions in this area would be difficult to provide the level of cleanliness to the buildings that we have come to expect from our custodians at this point in time.
Mr. Walker.
Just a little information on that from Ms. Sheridan's benefit. We did ask Mr. Ritchie to take a survey of square footage that custodians are responsible for around the state. And his assessment was that while this obviously would increase the square footage that each remaining custodian is responsible for, that it is still within acceptable levels. But I think everyone understands the importance of protecting the investment that we've made in our physical facilities. That being said, I'm not sure, with all due respect to our custodians who work very hard, I'm not sure I would agree that I would give that more priority than teachers who are in front of children. So I, I'm, I, this is a tough list, and the leadership team has worked very hard to balance any number of competing priorities. But I'm, I don't agree that if funds are restored, the priority should be a custodian ahead of teachers who are in front of children.
So with this, if we have, one of the things we should be looking at is what the numbers are involved with some of this. We have 3.4 teachers and then two custodians here, 5.4 people, so somewhere in the neighborhood of $275,000 to $300,000 in cuts for those positions. I think it would be a very rosy estimate that we could expect anything like that between now and Town Meeting. But hopefully it will give us some evidence to push for some further restorations if we can, given that, you know, as we saw earlier on the houseways, it means budget is due out on April 10th. I think that will give us a better idea of where state aid is coming in. And, you know, there is, there is time between now and May, even though the warrant is going to press tomorrow, the warrant is going to go to press with these numbers in it. But we should be, you know, keeping a watch on our revenue figures to see where we should be making the argument between now and beginning of Town Meeting with the Warrant Committee, and then be willing to make it on the floor of Town Meeting at the beginning of May.
So that, if I might answer, so that increased funding, we listen to the school committee, you decide, we talk to the school committee, we work with the Finance Subcommittee, and, you know, we put forth the teachers in the building. I had to sit down with one of those people today, you know, and explain the process that we're going through. And each one of those people is a dedicated, talented individual who works in the school district. And they are in front of children, they are caring for the schools. The administrative support people, again, the organization has to function. So on behalf of the schools, that would be 14.2 individuals who are working in the schools today if we do not get increased funding. And we are very, we understand the town is its schools and the schools are the town. And we work with the Warrant Committee, so you can see that the positions haven't changed. We've spent a tremendous amount of time with the Finance Subcommittee, the leadership team, and we work not to prioritize people. But we wanted to put this up that, so the public would understand with increased funding the positions that would be restored. And you could, so you can almost understand why we separated the custodians.
Ms. Pedera.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of mixed feelings. I'm very, very happy that the art and the music, strings, the band, we were kind of pushing to put that back, especially the future problem solvers. And, and also, I mean, just in talking about early literacy and the pre-creed programs, to have the child studies program back, I think we heard from a lot of parents that really love that program, and it's a low-cost alternative with preschools. But I'm just wondering, the, the teachers on this list, are these going to eliminate any courses or programs, or is this just increased, is it, I mean, which isn't great either?
All of the above.
So it will eliminate programs in the business? And then the PE?
Again, let's take, for example, the PE health.
Yeah.
At the middle school. We have a wellness Subcommittee. We understand the reduction there were at the elementary level. Every student had a PE and a health class. Now they have one PE class. At the middle school, Mr. Phelan, when you were there?
We had, we had five PE teachers. Now we have two, now we have three appears.
And so that is going to drastically reduce the health program. I mean, when we talk to parents, it's not a particular grade. Who's going to get health instruction? At the middle school, everyone should get health instruction. And so it is going to be all of the above. It's going to eliminate some courses. It's going to impact class size. You're not going to eliminate, Mr. Phelan added your number, Mr. Pavlicek.
The teaching salaries, teaching FTEs would come up to a dollar figure of $235,000 and approximately $80,000, an additional $80,000 for custodians.
So did I answer your question, Ms. Pedera?
It's Bagley Jones.
Can we go back to the restorations? Or no, you have it in front of us, so we don't have to. But so on this, on the restor, yeah, you have it. So these things here, these are all going to save, like if we had cut, made all these cuts, a lot of those programs would be completely gone, correct?
Completely gone.
So child studies would be gone, ACE, band strings, CURS. So most of those would be pretty much flat out gone.
Positions and programs eliminated.
Right. So it's the positions as well as the programs that we have restored. Does that also positively impact middle school teams? Remember, we were thinking we'd have to get rid of the teaming approach?
Yes, the social studies teacher at the middle school was the, the one that would put the teams at risk as they presently stand.
Okay. So that's, that's a really positive thing that I just wanted to make sure of. And then with their reductions, of course, Ms. Gormley knows I'm going to say something about the health teacher.
We feel passionately about it too.
You know, it's just, again, having conversations with kids about health issues and how they refer to their PE, their health classes. This isn't the time and day to be cutting it, but we, you know, I understand what we have to do. Can I ask a question about the residency coordinator? That position now is full-time?
Correct. We hired initially part-time last spring, and then we put it into a full-time mode. After having it over the course of a summer in a kindergarten session and going into the spring, we met with her and asked, you know, can you get this work done? Can you provide the follow-through? And we believe that reorganization is something that we can do and still and keep the integrity of her position and the work that she does.
I just, I mean, I know that that's an important issue for many people and whatever. And then I did want to just echo Ms. Sheridan's concern, and I do understand where Mr. Walker's coming from as well. I just know Ms. Sheridan worked really, really hard to get our new schools, as we all have. And it is painful to think that we may not have, that we may jeopardize the standing. So I do appreciate the point being brought up, and I, and I do think that's a valid one. And I also understand what Mr. Walker's saying about teachers in the classroom. So it's a, it's not a good situation at all. And I think that you all, the Finance Subcommittee and the rest of you, and the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, have done a great job of trying to get the best-case scenario out of a very not-great situation, and I appreciate that.
It's a, going back to thinking of past years, and it's important for the public to know, one year, looking at this number of people who are in front of children working in the district, we made reductions in electricity and utilities. There are no more cuts to make on behalf of the Milton Public Schools. We made reductions in cuts in text materials and supplies. We made reductions in professional development. There are no more cuts to make in those areas. We sit down with the Finance Subcommittee. If there were more cuts in those areas or reductions, we would make them. So these, these are real people who are in front of students, teaching students in the Milton Public Schools, and these are needed funds. And as always, we prioritize the teacher in front of the student. Again, Mr. Phelan, the amount of money?
$235,000.
$235,000 in teachers in front of students.
Ms. Sheridan.
So I would just like to ask for some data collection because I'd like to refresh my memory on that, on those numbers of pre-construction, number of custodians and the size of the buildings, and then post, post-construction, and then where we've come, you know, how many we've laid off along the way here. And.
And they have been layoffs.
There have been. And no one, I mean, I'm a teacher. I don't want to cut teachers' positions. I really don't. But I feel that we have a sense of responsibility to the funds that were, you know, prepared, that were, were given to us to put this, these new buildings up. And, you know, if Mr. Ritchie has done the research, I trust his word, but I still feel very passionately about it, and I just need to say that. So if there's a way that the custodian could be moved up on the list?
We'll provide that data for you.
Thank you.
May I say one more thing? These building subs, over the years, when we have individuals who take leaves based on health issues or maternity leaves, we have, under Mr. Phelan's leadership at each building, we have hired a building substitute. And this person literally works every day, but they're in the Milton Public Schools, and they get the difference between $129 and $80. And I, I am 100% secure in telling you that over the years, over the last three years, these individuals have gone into, when a teacher takes a leave, so they're in the school, they know the protocols and procedures. With a building sub, we're able to hire a certified math or science teacher. Again, they want to join the Milton Public Schools. They know that if they come in at that entry level and we, and they prove themselves, it's been a successful match, and we then have an opening there, part of the pool that we interview. So every one of these positions is so important. Those building subs drive student achievement. You know, if you sit there and the viewing public, and again, when your child has a substitute, these building subs, and it was Mr. Phelan's initiative, have really secured the instruction, and these are certified teachers in front of our students. Sometimes it can be up to eight or 12 weeks. Again, it has worked. So every one of these positions is important to teaching and learning in the Milton Public Schools. Thank you.
It's my understanding from the Finance Subcommittee that we want to take a vote affirming that this is the level of cuts that would be made should the Warrant Committee's recommendation remain unchanged at Town Meeting.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
So I assume you are making that motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Bagley Jones. Any other discussion on this from the committee? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed?
No, I'm saying yes.
All right. Four and a half, one and three quarters. Anything else from the Finance Subcommittee report, Mr. Walker?
No.
School Building Committee, we've more or less covered. I would just mention the warrant this spring. We mentioned it last fall. When the School Building Committee, when the School Building Project began, we were doing an owner-controlled insurance program where we basically self-funded our, our workers' comp insurance and took a balloon policy in case there were any large expenditures above that. This year, the Town has received $660,000 of that back that was unspent. That will be on the warrant to pay school building debt, and so it will basically decrease the tax levy, sort of a prop two and a half underwrite, if you will, because it's going to decrease the override. With that, and with the expenditure of funds on the card readers, the only thing left for the School Building Committee is we have one more installment of that to retrieve, which we're hoping to do this summer, early fall. Roughly $125,000 still being held with the insurance company. And we're hoping, since that is all settled, to get that back, and that will finish the work of the School Building Committee. So it's one more item on that agenda. So it's one more item on that agenda. I thought we'd bring that up to date. Facility subcommittee report. Ms. Sheridan.
Yes, so we have a wonderful facility subcommittee that is being ably managed by Bill Ritchie now in the absence of Matt Gillis. We also have community members, Joe Murphy and Rick Monstrom, who sit on that committee, John Kibbe, too, but he wasn't able to be with us at our latest meeting. Just a few things to report out. We have, we are continually looking for ways to save money through our facilities. And one of those ways that we've repeatedly told you about are through energy upgrades. And even though our buildings are new, the technology becomes, you know, obsolete or there are better things very quickly. So we've recently completed upgrades in the library, auditorium, and field house here at the high school and at the Pierce Library. This was about a $75,000 project that if we had hired an outside contractor, but it was done in-house with, in-house people that we now have and were so fortunate at a cost of about $7,000. So we saved a lot of money in the actual work that we did, but we also will save money in energy going forwards. And just to describe that briefly, basically what it is, is it's a CO2 detector that they've installed in places such as this room right here. So when no one's in here, there's a detector that knows that there's no CO2 in the room so that they can shut down systems that aren't needed. So it's a pretty, you know, high-tech thing that we now are, have at our access and allows our systems to run on a need-only basis, which is pretty wonderful. We also have our Brooks Field refinishing, which has gone out to bid and the bids have been completed. We have a contract with Northeast Turf, and the total budget is not to exceed $460,000. And this is not to redo the whole field, all of the turf there, but just the E layer. Maybe way too much information, but it's the padding that's under the grass that you see. And we have received a donation, again, from the most generous Copland Family Foundation of $302,000 to go towards that total. Capital has given us $100,000, and the revolving account will pay for the rest of that. So we're looking to get a logo replaced on that a little differently maybe than we have now, but, so that's moving forward. There is phase two of our duck work here at the high school will be, begin and should be completed by July 1st. And every time we meet, we do a school energy use update, and we look at, you know, where each school is in terms of their consumption of both electricity and gas. And we're really right on track of where we expect to be. This year, we can't compare ourselves to last year because we had such a mild year. But overall, we're within, well within the data, the expectations that we, that we expect. So there are no outliers in any of that data. So school security has already been discussed about, and we have a few other things that we're looking into, possible cost reductions in lighting in maybe Brooks Field and someplace else. So the work goes on, and I just need to give a big shout out to Bill Ritchie and all of his very able staff that, that work with him. So, thank you.
Ms. Bagley Jones.
Quick question. How much did you say the Copland Foundation gave us for?
$302,000.
$302,000. So, Ms. Gormly, is it possible to have Mr. Traister follow up with some of the athletes to do some acknowledgement to the foundation?
Wonderful idea. Great idea.
Because the Brooks Field, from what I understand, is a terrible place to play on right now. And this will mean a lot to the athletics, athletes to get that field.
If I might, this is a really good news story. During the school building project, when the Copland Foundation donated the artificial turf and all the work that was done with the school building committee, the quality of the initial purchase enabled us to only have to do this half-million-dollar repair after 11, 10, 11 years and not have to completely go out and get another turf. And so I think that we should give credit. The finance subcommittee came up with the idea that over the last two years and all of the rentals of Brooks Field, we have charged a small surcharge. And that has enabled us to bring our revolving account to the number that we'll be able to, again, the Copland Foundation appreciates the community through the capital, hopefully at town meeting, the school system, and then their generous donation to bring the field back, Mr. Phelan? To new. That will be June and July, and it's a very, very exciting prospect. I'll follow up with the students' recognition. Thank you.
Anything else from facilities? Move on to policy. Goodness, Sharon.
So we have a lot of policies here to go over, but there really isn't a lot of discussion.
You'll be the judge of that.
I don't have a lot of discussion.
I love that one.
Sorry. So I just would like to begin with the first policy, BDB and BDC, which is the school committee officers and appointed officials, where recommending that that stay as is, with the exception of the very last title, which is duties of the secretary. The secretary, who shall be appointed by the committee and who shall be under the supervision of, as it stands, it says superintendent, but we would like to suggest that that change to school committee chair, and will create an accurate journal of all committee meetings. So it's, the rest stays the same.
It's been moved by the policy subcommittee to make this change. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Walker. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
So when you see that there are several here, excuse me, that say motion to eliminate, basically, Mr. Walker and I have spent a lot of time looking at these policies lately, and you'll see that we're asking to eliminate some of them. And the reason for that is, in most of these cases, they are not, we feel they are not necessary because there is already a mass general law that states the reason why, that states whatever the information is in that, in that policy that we've created. And most of these were created back in, originally adopted in 1997 and last adopted in 2005, so they haven't been looked at in quite a long time, and we really feel comfortable with the fact that the mass general law covers what, what needs to be covered, that we don't need these policies.
So you want to just...
Yes, and as Ms. Sheridan said, either they're not necessary or they're not enforceable or both.
So would you, for the benefit of people listening or watching, just run through the ones that you're proposing to eliminate and just briefly say what they are?
Sure. So the first one is the school committee superintendent relations. That just basically says that we should get along, and that's one of the ones that Mr. Walker's so correctly articulated that it's just not enforceable. The next one that we're voting to eliminate is, sorry, we didn't group these. School councils, which is letter E here. And that is policy BDFA. We should have grouped them that way, I'm sorry, but we just did them in order.
Should we ask questions as we go or wait till you go through all of them?
Sure.
No, you can go through all of them. I just wanted...
Go through the ones we're going to eliminate first and we'll come back and pick the questions on them.
Okay, so school councils, it just says it's all about school site councils, and that definitely is the Ed Reform Act and the, not necessary to have.
Our thinking was if we have a law, we don't need a policy.
Good.
Next one is BDG, the attorney.
Right, so again, we, we have an attorney, and it basically just tells us that we have to have an attorney, so we don't really feel that we need that policy. And the next one is...
BEDA.
Sorry. Do you remember?
Notice of school committee meetings, that's the open meeting law.
Covered by the open meeting.
Oh, right, right, right.
And BEDB, the agenda formats and content.
Right, so this one really is how we decide what the content will be of our meetings and the business, that business items that come before us as a school committee, how the agenda is formulated.
I had a question on this one, but is that, that's the last one we're...
Right.
To eliminate. This isn't covered by anything else, is it? Agenda format? I mean, what is the purpose of...
Well, it's partially covered by the open meeting law that says we have to post an agenda that gives a reasonable description of what we intend to discuss, which is largely what this policy says.
This does reiterate, though, that items of business may be suggested by any school committee, community member, staff member, or citizen, and inclusion is a discretion of the chairman. That's not part of the open meeting law.
No, no, it isn't, but I think that's stating the obvious, and I don't think we need to, a policy to tell us that those individuals could suggest an agenda item.
Ms. Bagley Jones.
The only, and I understand that, but the only is, I think sometimes the public gets confused by that. So have, being able to say we have a policy that says that that can't happen can be helpful. It come, you know, folks come in and don't understand that they can't. So what would we say instead of we have a policy? Tell me that first part again that you said.
If, if what?
If we do not have the policy about following the order of business. You're saying we don't need this, right?
Yeah.
Because it's being taken care of by...
Our practice.
Right, but it's helpful when parents or community members are angry or upset about something and they don't understand why we can't change the order of business or why we don't allow X, Y, and Z to happen. It's, I know I've had situations where I've said, we have a policy.
But I'm not particularly with the 301 or 302 policies. If we, if you like that one, let's keep it.
Yeah, I just mean, it's been helpful in the past to help diffuse people's understanding of why we don't just go here, there, and, I don't know.
Okay. In.
So we're going to...
I've no strong...
We're going to keep that one?
We'll call that the Bagley Jones Memorial Policy.
All right, so then what I'll do is I'll entertain a motion to eliminate policies BDD, policy BDFA, policy BDG, policy BEDA. That would be it. So...
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker. Seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Yes?
Can I still ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so on BDD, the first one, I agree it's not enforceable, but could I ask that we've talked in the past about putting together a packet for new incoming school committee members? And I think that this has some great information in there about the superintendent, you know, what your role is, what our role is with the superintendent. So it might just be something that we could add into. Didn't we talk about doing that?
Done.
Did we do that?
No.
Okay.
But Ms. Sheridan has reminded me that we will once again have a new school committee member and that we need such a package.
Right, so, I mean, we could even just take some of this language right out and put it in there.
And I will take responsibility for that.
Okay. And also, Kristin, there's another policy later on in Part B that talks about orientation of new committee members, so that information would be helpful in there.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on these policies to eliminate? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Then we have the rest of them are policies to reapprove as written. So you want to just say what, say what they are?
Sure. So policy BDE slash BDF, policy BDEA on finance subcommittee, policy BE, the regular and special meetings of the school committee, policy BEDB, oh no, that was just, that's one being kept, sorry, BEDB, we're not motion to eliminate, we're keeping.
So that's to keep as is.
That's to keep as is. And policy BEDD and BEDF, rules of order and voting method.
And the last one, BEDG as well.
Oh, sorry.
Minutes.
Minutes.
So it's moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Walker, two votes to reapprove those set of policies without any change. Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? That's unanimous as well. Anything else from policy subcommittee?
Next meeting.
Any old business, citizens speak topics, response, anyone? Agenda items for our next meeting? We have the superintendent's, your reactions to the superintendent's mid-cycle evaluation?
We have the Milton High School Site Council.
Right.
And in the spirit of recognition, I thought we'd invite the basketball team.
Oh, that would be great.
And the hockey team?
And the hockey team. The basketball and the hockey team, if I might, Milton High School. And we are, and we also have a short facilities update, consolidated facilities, once a year you hear from them.
Okay. Do we have anyone else for citizens to speak this evening? So at that point then, I would enter a motion, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy with the Milton Educators Association, not to return to open session but to adjourn directly from executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Let's call for a roll call vote. Ms. Peder.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Sheridan. Myself, yes. Ms. Bagley Jones?
Yes.
Thank you all. Good evening.